Yeah, I think.
Sorry for the delay. We are sending a link to Rick Morrissey Corp Counsel. We did not send him one.
Are we here yet or no?
We are here. I'm just, I don't know, see if Rick Morrissey's on because he's gonna have to do the Fifth Avenue one.
I've just sent him the link. Hopefully he'll be able to to jump on momentarily.
Go lay down. Come on Bobby. Go ahead. Go lay down.
We move on to another case and come back to him?
You know, maybe, maybe you want to take the one for the apartment on the first floor?
Yeah, the 89 Fourth Street?
Yep.
Okay, so if we could begin the meeting, Dash, could you take the attendant or role, please?
Gladly. Kathy Conroy?
Here.
John Normile?
Here.
Jack McCann?
Present.
Mark Pelosi?
Here.
Katie McLaren?
Here.
All right, all five members present, so we'll proceed with adopting the January 5th minutes.
Okay, if we could do that, please, we have a motion to adopt the minutes of the January 5th meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried. Okay, so we're gonna move down to case PLZBA 2022-0008, 89 Fourth Street. A special use permit, the residence below the second floor of the principal structure. The applicant, David Crop, proposes to convert the first floor commercial space of this property into residential. Is the applicant present? Mr. Crop? Okay, maybe we can go on to the last case here and then come back to him if he comes in later. PLZBA 2022-0009, 1624 Highland Avenue. Multiple-family residential medium density, an area variance for parking deficiency of one space where four spaces are required. The applicant, Anthony Bean, is proposing to open a grocery with a deli in a vacant storefront. Mr. Bean, present?
Yes. I'm speaking for Mr. Bean.
Okay.
Elizabeth, yeah, Elizabeth Rodriguez from TAP.
Okay.
My thing says Darren Scott, and I don't know how to change it, but Elizabeth Rodriguez from TAP.
Well, you look familiar.
So it's pretty simple. We were here before for use variance, which we obtained. But we neglected to ask for the parking variance. We're deficient by one spot. There's three existing in garages on the property. And it appears that the neighborhood has adequate parking. It's a positive use for a vacant space, bringing it back into use. And we feel like it's going to be mostly used by the neighborhood, people walking to the store. Or if it's somebody in a car that they're gonna pull up, get what they want and leave, it's not going to attract a group of cars all at one time. So.
Okay, so basically you just, you just neglected to ask for this part of the variance?
Correct.
When you got it before, so that sounds fairly simple. Is there anybody here to speak in favor of this proposal? Anybody to speak in opposition? Okay, do we have any issues with this, members of the board, since we already approved it?
And I believe when we did approve it, that there was a lengthy conversation pertaining to parking, even though that wasn't.
You're right. I remember that. I remember that also. Okay, so that being the case, do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion.
Can we do a secret first?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're right. Go ahead.
So, Madam Chair, for PLZBA 2022-0009, I'd ask the board to find this proposal to be an unlisted action with sufficient information available, how much to make a determination that the project is not expected to cause significant environmental impact.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
And on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, Mark, go ahead.
For PLZBA 2022-0009, 1624 Highland Avenue, I would make an application to approve the area variance. Doesn't appear as though there's gonna be any undesirable change to the neighborhood or the character thereof. There's no other feasible means for the applicant to get this benefit. It's not a substantial variance they're requesting, and it's not self-created.
Wait, have a second?
A second.
Okay, and on the motion? Jack McCann? I knew he was there.
Got a mute.
Yeah. Okay, we'll come back to him. John Normile?
I vote yes to approve.
Mark Pelosi?
Yes to approve.
Katie McLaren? Okay.
Come on, help him.
Jack, can you hear me?
Give a thumbs up.
Right, or thumbs up, nod your head, or shake your head if you're voting no. Where'd you go? Okay. You gotta unmute. Yep. That's all right. Just nod your head, Jack. If you, if you wanna vote yes, thumbs up. Do you wanna vote no, thumbs down? Okay, he went thumbs up, and I think I didn't vote. Kathy Conroy, yes. So you have five yeses, no's, no no's, so the variance is approved.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome. Do we have?
Okay, we have Rick Morrissey's having problems, but he's on my, he's on my phone listening to the conversation.
Okay, so if there's any questions, we'll deal with that. Okay.
And Rick, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can, can you hear Rick when he said that?
I did.
Yes.
Okay, so he's here, so it's not, it's gonna be awkward, but we'll give it a try.
Okay, PLZBA 2022-0002, 525th Avenue. A use variance for used auto sales and a special use permit for an auto service repair. The applicant, Michaela Rizik, proposes to use this former auto service facility for used car sales and auto repair service. Used car sales requires a use variance and auto repair service requires a special use permit. The applicant is represented by Barb Nelson, RA of TAP Inc. So Barb, are you here? Barb Nelson?
No, I'm sorry, Elizabeth Rodriguez here again from TAP. Barb's away this week.
Oh, okay.
Stand in, but Michaela's going to present her project, and I'll just back up as needed, since I'm not as familiar with it as Barb was. Michaela will present.
Madam Chair, it's Andy Brick. Hi, just to let the board know and the public know, I'm recused from representing the board in this particular matter, as I was involved in a prior application for this property in opposition to what was being requested. So there's a conflict of interest for me to represent you. However, Corporation Counsel Rick Marcy is on the line. And it's my understanding he's gonna be representing you guys in this matter, and you'll be very well represented.
Okay, thanks, Andy. All right, Michaela, Michaela, is it? Rizik, is that the name?
It's Michelle. How are you?
I'm sorry, Michelle. Okay, go ahead.
So, um, I own a business on Latem, a family business, called Latem Auto Sales and Service. On 9th and Latem, we've been in business since 2017. And we found this location on Fifth Avenue in Troy. And we're looking to grow and expand in my husband's hometown. This location will be at your expectation always. It was a former auto service facility before, and our plan is to keep it clean and attractive, to bring customers in and stay in business for a very long time. We will definitely respect our neighbors and our neighborhoods. We are looking to, we are not looking to bother anyone. Our business, ours will be between 9:30 to 6:00, Monday to Friday, Saturday, 9:30 to 3:00. And nothing will be done before or after our specialty deliveries or pickup. And we will only have up to three employees. We are very excited and we are looking forward to this opportunity in Troy. Um, we had a meeting before in January with a, with the zoning, with the planning, I'm sorry, and they told us that we need to come up in front of you guys today.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? Okay, is anybody here to speak in favor of this proposal? Or anybody to speak in opposition? I believe we had an email from the neighbor on Sixth Avenue who had some questions. And of course, I now have misplaced the piece of paper that had the email on it. Is the applicant, is the neighbor present? Yes, Mr. Cox. I'm sorry, how do you pronounce your last name? Could you unmute there, Justin?
Yes, sorry, I apologize. It's Cox.
How do you pronounce your last name?
It's Cox, C-O-C-K-X.
Okay, okay, so, Mr. Cox, did, would you mind relating for us again, your?
Yeah, absolutely, 100%. So I have four questions, basically, for the applicant in regards to us being neighbors.
Excuse me, but if you could just outline them, and then we will direct the questions to her.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, so go ahead.
Number one is, will the parking area have adequate draining to prevent any runoff that now occurs or leaching of rainwater, et cetera, that may contain contaminated water with oil or fuel from the older vehicles that will be there for service and repair? Will that runoff be prevented from going into the neighborhood residences or public alleyway, which happens to drain into my property behind the building? Will there be any fuel or oil storage on the property, and if so, will there be adequate fire suppression equipment, et cetera, in place that is up to par with storage requirements as per Troy City Code? Will the, what, what kind of lighting are we looking at putting in the parking area? Were they gonna be, so the original plan had them parking vehicles on the side of the property, imagining they would have some kind of lighting. Will that be illuminating through the residential windows at night? You know, obviously during sleeping hours, et cetera, so on and so forth? Or is that something that would be switched off when they leave at the end of the day? And we happened to notice as neighbors that there was a stop-work order on the premises because they applied for the use of the building to be a storage facility, even though disclosing it to the residents and the neighborhood as being a service facility for mechanics and an automobile shop, not really showing a very good steward of the city. So we were kind of concerned in regards to their future performance, I guess, will they be adhering to all city codes from this point moving forward and making sure that they're being a good steward to the neighborhood? And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else to speak in opposition? Or with questions? Okay, so could the applicant, I'm sorry, Michelle, did you say?
Yes.
Michelle. Okay, could you, oh, wait a minute, or Elizabeth, Liz?
Sure.
Which of you would like to answer the question?
Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Me?
Do you want?
Great. She's, I believe, Michelle, have you talked to Hirschberg in Hirschberg about?
Yes, so he sent me an email, and there is a proposal between me and him. He's working on the drainage and whatever it needs to comply with the city engineer, engineering requirement. We, he's, he's aware of it, and he's working on it right now.
Okay, that was the first question.
And then?
I don't.
Oil?
Yes.
So no oil or fuel storage in the property, no.
Okay.
And regarding the lights, there's gonna be two big lights in the front and one in the back alley.
Okay, and are they gonna go off when you, when you leave, when they're, the end of the day, are they gonna be on all night long? What's your plan?
No, they will be off.
They'll be off when you leave, when you're closed?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And regarding the storage, um, so the prior owner had his belongings in the garage, and, I mean, it was vacant property. He had his storage in there, but we have nothing to do with it right now.
Okay, now, there was, the previous owner came before the zoning board and got approval to store vehicles there for a certain length of time.
And he moved them.
Presumably that, pardon me?
He already moved the trucks from the front parking.
Oh, so whatever he had there, he left, and then, did you buy it already?
We are, we are leasing the property to buy it.
Okay, you're leasing it to buy it. Okay.
Yeah.
Could I ask you a question about the, and it might be in your proposal, I don't recall, about the number of cars you're gonna have there and?
So that's gonna be?
For sale?
Yeah.
Then the auto repair, if you could just address that for the record, please?
So we're gonna have 24 vehicles. On, I'm trying to carry it, so you can see it. Right here, 24 is gonna be handicap parking right here and two or three employees parking on the other side.
And then you're gonna have room for the 24?
And right here.
Sell?
Yes.
Okay.
And an empty space right here and right here in front of the garage. All this is gonna be empty space.
All right, and then in addition to the cars you're gonna have there to sell, you're also gonna have cars there to work on? Correct?
Yeah, so it's, this is gonna be one and two, it's gonna be the sale one, and this one is gonna be the parking for the cars that we're gonna be repairing, and this is gonna be our, the customer parking. I don't know if you can see it, but.
Yeah, I can. All right, so you talked about the, the long one, and then the shorter one are the ones that are gonna be for sale?
Yes, ma'am, and this one's gonna be.
Yeah, for the ones that are, need to be repaired.
Yeah, and this is our customer, three parking with one handicap.
Yep, got it. Okay.
I'll just say that the lighting would be reviewed by the planning, the planning board. Anything related to the site will be reviewed by the planning board.
Okay, so does anybody else from the board have any questions for this applicant?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, go ahead, Jack.
I, I didn't hear the the topic of drainage addressed. Perhaps I missed it. I was having some difficulty with the computer.
No, I don't think it was, I don't think it was addressed.
Thank you. Would you mind addressing that, please?
Sure, so Ben Hirschberg is working on that, that proposal for us.
And he's gonna, and he's coming through with the report that's gonna show how you're gonna take care of that?
Exactly, yeah.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I do, Kath.
Okay, go ahead, John.
In regards to the, the topic we're just talking about, about drainage and runoff, and Hirschberg is going to come up with a plan that I, I think is gonna be, will have to be approved by the city. Is the, is the applicant willing to make any variance conditional upon the city's approval of that plan?
Yes.
Isn't that the purview of the planning department? The planning board, excuse me, planning board?
I'll defer to counsel, I guess I meant.
So what is the specific question?
If the, if the drainage issue, if the applicant would be agreeable to having the variance contingent upon how the drainage turns out with the Hirschberg company? And then Liz brought up the point that isn't that issue the purview of the planning commission and not us?
I think they're the.
I mean, I might, I might be able to answer that, Kathy. This is Aaron, City.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, that, that, the drainage issue would be the purview of the planning commission, that, that site plan review. So typically, that's handled by them. I would also say that there's no need for you to put a condition or such a condition on, on this project, because it goes without saying that that will have to be addressed in order for them to get their building permit. So whether the planning commission addresses it or not, my office will certainly address it when it comes time for them to pull a building permit. Although I would, I would suggest, you know, to the planning commission that they, they, they receive the plans from Dan Hirschberg in that they review it prior to their approval, and I'm sure they will do that, so.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any more questions?
Steve Strickman, I think you should consider some type of buffering as a condition along the northern property. There's gonna be cars, I think, parked right up against, next to the house on the northern edge. So I know the planning commission will review that and determine what they'd like to see there for a buffer, but I think something should be required there.
Okay. Do we have any other questions? Then are we ready to vote, or?
What fence that's supposed to be there?
And I'm sorry, is there a wood fence there?
There is on the map that I'm looking at. I don't know.
Metal fence. It's a metal fence.
So it's a metal fence, and the height of that is, how tall?
Um.
Six feet.
Maybe six feet, yeah.
Does it have the slats?
No slats. It's open chain, open chaining fence.
It's a solid wood fence on the drawing?
It's no wood fence.
All right, but the point remains that, that we would, we perhaps would want to indicate that there should be some sort of buffering there, and then it'll be up to the planning commission to decide what that buffering will be, regardless of whether or not the fence is there now, and if that's deemed enough or if you have to do something else.
Could be adequate buffering. Adequate buffering as determined by the planning commission.
Right. So, all that being said, are we ready to vote?
We need a secret first.
I believe so. Secrets unlisted. Yes.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I would move for PLZBA 2022-0002 that the board find this proposal to be an unlisted action with sufficient information available, how much to make a determination that the project is not expected to cause significant environmental impact.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Do we have a motion on the application? I would assume it should be two motions, one for use variance, one for special use permit?
That is correct.
Okay. So do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Okay, want me to make, you gonna do it, Jack?
No, go ahead, Kath.
Okay. Wouldn't, I thought I would have done this, but, um, PLZBA 2022-002, 525th Avenue, a use variance for used auto sales and a special use permit for an auto service repair. I make a motion that we accept, I make a motion in the positive to, I'm trying to find my piece of paper here. I move to approve the use variance based on the fact that the, I don't know, it hasn't been financially, but I'm, having lived up I don't know, it, it hasn't been financially, but I'm, having lived up there, I can say that that land is not gonna yield a reasonable economic return for anything other than, um, the purpose for which these people would like to use it. I mean, it's that, it's got a history that's painful, and, um, I really would like to see some use be made of it with the understanding, which isn't, which is not, uh, something that we have to put into the motion, but with the understanding that the city will pay very close attention, no disrespect to the applicant, to the way that this, um, business is going to go forward. Um, the need for the variance, I suppose, was not caused by the applicant. It was always a, an auto, uh, business, and that's just what it is, and it's just hasn't been able to be, um, used as such in quite a long time, since it also has been there since as long as I can remember, that use shall not alter the essential character of the neighborhood because it's always been there. So with that being said, and the plight of the owner is not due to unique circumstances, it's just, uh, the neighborhood and presumably they will be cognizant of the fact that there are residences in the neighborhood and treat them accordingly. Now that I muddled my way through that, um, could we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, yeah, sure, Jack, second, don't do it, but second.
Oh, no, I'm gonna second.
Not teasing, teasing ya, okay. Um, that being case, oh, and also, we would like to make sure that there is a buffer on the, um, north edge of the property, which we would urge the Planning Commission to, um, make note of and decide to do the, um, what's best for that area. Okay, phew, that being said.
Wait, Kathy, hang on a sec, uh-
Oh, come on, Steve.
Rick, Rick Morris, she is saying something, so hang on.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
I mean, if, if you're going to urge the Planning Commission to, uh, do a buffer on the north end, then, uh, you might as well also urge the Planning Commission to, uh, take a hard look at the drainage and make sure they come up with a good solution.
Okay, so uh, we would also add that we would encourage the Planning Commission to take a hard look at the drainage and come up with the appropriate solution for that area. I might also say, can I add the, um, special use permit into that motion? Dash, Steve, somebody answer, tell me.
I would make, I would make a separate motion, there are different conditions for each one. I would do one and then do vote on this and then vote on the other one.
Okay, all right, so on the use variance. Um, Jack McCann?
I vote yes to approve.
Mark Palazzi?
Yes.
John Normile?
I vote yes to approve.
Katie McLaren?
Uh, yes, to approve.
And Kathy Conroy, yes, to approve. And now that we have a motion on the special use permit?
All right, Madam Chair, I will make a motion on PLZBA twenty-two zero 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 two, the special use permit, seeking to operate an auto repair service. I would make a positive motion for that. I don't believe that it falls under any of the criteria for denying such an application under the city code section two eighty-five thirty-three. Uh, for that reason, I would make a positive application to approve.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Katie seconds on the motion. John Normile?
I vote yes to approve.
Jack McCann?
Yes, to approve.
Kathy Conroy, yes, to approve. Katie McLaren?
Yes, to approve.
And, uh, Mark Palazzi?
Yes.
Okay, so, there you go, good luck. You've got your use variance and special use permit.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, and, uh, so now, we can excuse Rick.
Yes, we're gonna excuse Rick and let Andy back in. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Rick.
Okay, so now, um, let me just throw this out there, the applicant for, is Mr. Crop here? Let me put it that way, for eighty-nine Fourth Street?
I did try to call him and I emailed him, so at this point, no.
Okay, so then we'll go on to PLZBA twenty-two zero 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 seven, one ninety-nine Second Street, where, um, they're looking for an area variance, an area variance. The applicant, Maxwell Woolley, proposes to subdivide an existing lot into three separate tax parcels. Reliefs sought include thirty-two feet from the minimum lot width at the front building line and ten feet from the minimum side setback. The applicant is represented by Barb Nelson, which presumably is, um, Elizabeth Rodriguez again, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so are you gonna start, or Mr. Woolley?
I'm gonna start, and, uh, and then Mr. Woolley will, um, explain why he'd like to do this.
Okay.
So it's a simple proposal. It, it's an extra-large lot on Washington Park with a, a big, uh, green side yard. That lot was originally the site of a church that filled, uh, just about the entire width of that site. And, uh, Mr. Woolley is proposing to split off the house and the lots to the south and split that resulting lot in half. As a result, in order to make two buildable lots, he requires a variance for the lot that the house is on, uh, because it's a little bit deficient in width, I believe. And we contend that it's perfectly consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. The, there are no, uh, large gaps between the buildings, uh, on Washington Park, uh, and fifty-foot wide lot or fifty-five-foot wide lot is not a standard size. There may be a couple buildings that are that wide, but, um, the forty-three-foot wide lot is, uh, certainly larger than a lot of the other lots on the, on the whole, when you look at the perimeter of the park. Um, so we think it's pretty simple, that there's this side lot that was combined at some point. He wants to se- separate it out, and uh, there requires a very small variance to, uh, make it comply. And Max, you wanna add anything to that?
I know, uh, it was a pretty good summation. I think the only clarification I wanna make is that the variances only apply to the lot where that the existing building is on. The side setback variance, uh, and the, the unit frontage variance are not the, are not required for the two additional lots that would be created on the vacant lot. Those are a hundred percent according to what the, the current zoning code is.
Okay, do we have anybody here to speak in favor of this proposal?
I believe my wife submitted a letter, but I doubt that there's anybody, anybody else speaking in favor.
Submit a letter, and we have some letters submitted in opposition, but is there anybody here who hasn't yet submitted something? Yes, I, I, Kathy Sheehan, I see that you're, um, here. Is, is there anybody else who wants to, uh, well, anyway, we'll, we'll go to Kathy, she raised her hand, and if there's anybody else here who wants to speak, who hasn't yet submitted a letter, which we've all read the emails, um, and has something different that they would like to add, we would be glad to hear from you. But Kathy, we'll hear from you first, since you raised your hand. Go ahead, if you'd give your, uh, name and your position, please.
Hey, uh, good evening, I'm Catherine Sheehan. I live at one forty-nine Second Street here in Troy, and I'm the Rensler County Troy City historian. I'm speaking, and certainly reference to second item on the agenda of, of one ninety-nine Second Street requesting the variance for the lot. Uh, I do not think that this is a wise move to subdivide this property, um, and I'd like to respond to the questionnaire that I saw, um, that was submitted. Uh, in response to question number two, um, there are in fact only five homes that were built after eighteen sixty-five, and only one in the twentieth century, nineteen sixteen, which was St. Mary's School, now Park Place Apartments. The majority of the houses around the park were built in the eighteen forties and fifties. In response to number three, with the exception of Washington Place, the buildings were scattered in pit time periods. There were many years where there was green space, uh, between the buildings. The city is far benefiting by the longer-term economic boom created by the film industry, who is looking for nineteenth-century period buildings and streetscapes, with over a thousand people, including actors and associated industry personnel, staying here for weeks this past year, and with the intent on filming here again this summer, the economic advantages are far greater than the few thousand dollars in tax revenue gleaned off those two properties. Productions with national followings such as the Gilded Age will only increase other movie productions to want to film here, which will in turn increase tourism to this area, again, something we've all seen and benefited economically since the filming here last summer alone. Mid to late nineteenth-century views, these directors and production designers were looking for, was used several times, with long camera views from the third-street side of Washington Place, that was then panned all the way down to the garden lot and one ninety-nine Second Street. Um, that view was shown more than once in just the first two episodes, and will be shown various times in the upcoming episodes as well. The last structure built on the park was over a hundred and eight years ago. The land in question has been green space for over one hundred years, as the Park Presbyterian Church was torn down in nineteen twenty. Washington Park is a national historic district that received that designation in nineteen seventy-three, one of the earlier ones in the country. The fabric of this unique neighborhood must be preserved. It is only one of two private ornamental parks in New York State, Gramercy and New York City is the other, and only one of three in the entire country. Clearly, it is unique in its architectural and landscape features, including that, what has now been considered Green Space Park, and features, and must be preserved. Thank you.
Can I just quickly respond to that?
Uh, no, 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 not yet. You will, you will be able to, but not yet, okay? So write down what you wanna say, and you can talk about it later. Um, anybody else to speak in opposition?
Uh, this is Jim Martin. I represent the Washington Parks Association of Troy as its president of the board, and I did submit a letter on behalf of the board, so I don't wanna repeat myself if, if you'd rather not hear from me, but I do, I just wanna make sure for the record, um, that you, the board realizes that the Washington Parks Association is represented here. Uh, we are an association of forty-two owner members, including, uh, Mr. Woolley, and we have spoken about his application, and we've talked about, um, either denying or at least deferring it or tabling it, uh, to give us time to have further conversation with him about his plans, and I would like to specifically note that, that everything on the agenda so far tonight, we've at least heard some level of plans for these requests by applicants for, uh, for variances. And what we haven't heard from Mr. Woolley, and what we're so, uh, concerned and upset about, is that, uh, we have not heard anything about any plan, other than a subdivision, and the consideration of a subdivision in, uh, essentially the middle or a focal point of a National Historic Register group of properties, uh, that has been this intact for this period of time, is really just untenable. And I'm, I'm quite surprised to hear that anyone thinks that this is a simple application and, uh, not entirely dissimilar to the rest of the neighborhood, because that is, that is just an inappropriate way to look at the possibility of subdividing a property that has been the streetscape for the past seventy years, since that church came down, and is a national historic registry of properties. So this, at the very least, requires some statement of planning. What is the intent? Is there a buyer for these lots that, uh, would eventually be subdivided? Is there a plan for properties to, uh, to be built there? Uh, the idea that something could be built that would be a two-family home on, uh, lots, uh, that are surrounded by three and four-story buildings, uh, that were, the construction that began, uh, before the middle of the nineteenth century, uh, is, uh, it is something that we would need a great deal more information, uh, from the applicant about. So I hope the, the ZBA considers that in its decision, and, uh, would at least, uh, table this, if not deny it outright at this time.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Martin. Anybody else to speak?
Madam Chair.
Okay, uh, your name, please?
Uh, two, two people spoke.
Yeah, two people spoke, what's, well, uh, I, I'm, uh, Garrett Hamlin.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, so I'm Garrett Hamlin.
Yeah, we spoke, we, we heard from you before also, so unless you have something else you wanna say?
I, I do have something to add, so I did submit a-
Okay.
I did submit a document, but I wanted to share two things. Um, one is that, uh, I have come to understand that the, um, seeker determination is intended to be a type-two action, and I believe that due to the, um, historic nature of the park and the fact of its, uh, registry, that this type-two seeker would not be appropriate for this kind of action. It would at least need an unlisted action, which would require a short environmental assessment form, uh, and a waiting period, uh, associated with that. So I would like to add that to my, my comments.
Great, thank you very much.
Kathy, if I may just weigh in on that briefly, um, that this project, uh, the proposal, the action involved, the variance is before you. However, the underlying action is a subdivision of land, while the area variances may be type-two actions, because it's associated with a subdivision of land, which is not a type-two action, this would be characterized as an unlisted action for seeker purposes, and a seeker determination will be required.
Okay, thanks, Andy.
I appreciate that, and then Madam Chair, I have one other comments.
Oh, okay.
If we don't mind. Um, I mentioned in my, um, comments that the remaining two lots would be thirty feet, and if I understand the, um, the zoning correctly, that would leave twenty-foot, uh, buildable area on each of those lots, which means a single-family only would be allowed to be built on the, built on those lots, and you would subsequently likely see a request for an area variance to develop those properties in ways that are more consistent with the historic nature of the park to begin with. So allowing this subdivision actually will set you up for a position where you'll need to consider variances for the other lots down the road, which you don't, I would suspect you really don't wanna do, so I'll, I'll add that to my comments.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Hamlin. Anybody else to speak? There was another person-
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, who would that be?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Yes, uh, my name is Nicholas Passo. I'm an attorney in the litigation group at Colin &amp; Dykman. I also happen to be a resident of Troy. Uh, we represent Stephen Hartman in opposition to, uh, Mr. Woolley's application number, uh, two oh two two seven. Uh, and I happen to be coming to you from Albany Airport, so excuse me if there's any, uh, any background noise, but there's, uh, uh, the only, only way I can jump on this. Uh, I just have a couple of, uh, uh, items to add in addition to Mr. Hartman's letter submission. I'll try not to be repetitive. This is not a situation where the applicant is facing a hardship and a variance is necessary for the applicant to obtain some benefit from the property or a reasonable economic return. This is an example of an applicant seeking to inflate an already valuable property through substantial unnecessary development that fails to comply with the city's zoning code. Uh, so the, the applicant is, is not entitled to, uh, maximize the value of his property, particularly when the property's existing value and the applicant's ability to make improvements in compliance with the zoning code are present. Uh, so we think that's an important element of this for the board to consider. Uh, in addition to this issue, and this is something that, uh, that was touched on prior, the applicant is asking ZBA to improperly segment review of the proposed development by limiting its review to the lot width and side setback requirements when the application concedes that this is part of a larger overall economic, uh, over, uh, development plan, uh, so-
Do not, that is incorrect. We have no further plans.
All right, excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Woolley. Excuse me. Mr. Facis has the floor. You'll have an opportunity to speak when you're done.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, so by solely seeking, uh, the area variance for ZBA and not presenting the entire proposal to, uh, to the board, um, the applicant is asking you to consider the small aspect of the development in isolation, uh, which prevents the board from considering the overall impacts of the proposal on Mr. Hartman and, and the neighborhood at large. So we think that's an important element for, uh, the board to consider, and in fact, would require denial of, of the application. Uh, just two other points that, uh, I'm not gonna refer to everything that we've gone over in the letter. We think it's pretty detailed. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to address those. Uh, but there are two elements that we raised that we think are dispositive of the application and require its denial. Uh, the first is that this alleged difficulty was self-created. The applicant purchased the property with knowledge of the zoning limitations. This fact prevents the application, when considered together with the other statutory factors and the factors in the, uh, city code, uh, prevents the application from being approved. Uh, so that's critical. Uh, even if the application could get past, uh, that one fatal flaw, the applicant still fails because there's been, made no showing of a practical difficulty imposed by meeting the requirements of the city code. As you all know, this is a mandatory requirement under section two eighty-five thirty-three D of the city code. The application doesn't even attempt to establish a practical difficulty. It doesn't provide any evidence that would tend to- It doesn't provide any evidence that would tend to show a practical difficulty. And the applicant couldn't make the showing, so it's not surprising that it's not included in the application because frankly, there, there's no practical difficulty in improving the property in compliance with the zoning code. So that second element of the application that is lacking uh, is fatal to it and requires denial of the application. And just lastly, um, the, the applicant and, and his representative attempt to construe this a, a mere uh, variance for just the lot width and a side setback pertaining to the portion of the property with the building. Uh, but when you look at the application as a whole, that, that's not what they're asking ZBA to do. And in fact, looking at uh, ZBA's uh, notice of meeting, the notice itself uh, shows that ZBA interpreted the application as seeking uh, variances from the side setback requirements on both sides of the property. That's set forth verbatim in the, in the public uh, meeting notice. Um, so you know, that, that is what's going on here. I think ZBA correctly interpreted the application as, as requesting that additional relief. Um, so i- it isn't quite fair to characterize uh, the request as simple and straightforward and narrow when it's actually much, much broader. So for these reasons, uh, and those set forth in our letters, uh, those in the Washington Park Association's letters and Mr. Hamlin's submission, uh, we believe that uh, which, which Mr. Hartman incorporates by reference into his objections, uh, we respectfully submit that the ZBA should deny the application in its entirety. And we're happy to answer any questions. Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Faso. Anybody else to speak in opposition? Okay, Mr. Woolley, you have an opportunity to respond?
Uh, yeah, so you know, we, we had that, just starting from the end here, we had uh, emailed with Dash and he confirmed that we are not asking for setback variance from the lots. The setback variance relates to the building, the, the lot that will be on the existing building only, not the additional two vacant lots that we're seeking, seeking to create. Um, so that's one. Um, two, you know, people are asking, you know, saying that there, there needs to be larger plans. We don't have larger plans. That's not, you know, there are no further plans for development at this time. We are, we are merely at this time asking the, the board to look at a variance that will allow us to go before planning to seek to subdivide the property. Kathy, you bring up really wonderful points that I 100% agree with. I've spent a lot of time rehabbing this house. I care very, very much about the historical character of this neighborhood and would never do anything to damage it. I 100% agree with you. I'm not seeking to build buildings on those, on those lots. There, there is no proposal before the board to do that. At such time, if, if a future owner or, or I, it's not going to be me because I don't have the money to do it. But if there's a future owner that, that wants to do that, the board and planning and, and all kinds of people will have ample opportunity to, to reject or, or scrutinize any future construction that would happen on those lots. But that's not what we're seeking right now. All we are seeking is, is the, are these variances to go before the planning commission and seek a subdivision of the property and nothing more.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Woolley. Anybody else from the uh, opposition side? We can have one person if you choose to respond or no one, which is fine because we all know where you stand and we know where he stands, so. And if someone wants to speak, by all means do so, but we only hear one person uh, in rebuttal. Okay, I think everybody's made themselves.
Kathy, could I, could I ask, uh, could I ask Andy a question? I have a question regarding this. Um, it was about Mr. Mr. Faso's comments. Um, this is an area variance, correct? So there's five tenants to an area variance, but unlike a use variance, the applicant doesn't need to meet all five, correct? The, the, the ZBA is able to wait uh, the, the, the five tenants of the variance and make a, make a decision based on, based on that. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct in relation to the fifth element, whether or not the um, hardship is self-created. Uh, under the use variance test, um, they must demonstrate that it's not uh, self-created. Uh, and, and if they can't, then, then the application fails. With a, with an area variance, it's somewhat different test, it's less stringent. Whether or not it's self-created is a consideration that the board must take into account when analyzing the other four factors. But it is not by itself fatal like it would be in a use variance um, application.
Okay, thanks, Andy. Does anybody from the board have any questions, anything they'd like to bring up?
I just wanted to say that um, in the application, there is a short environmental form done. But I don't know, because it's, it's on our agenda as a type-two, do we need to reconsider anything? Because now you're saying that it's unlisted.
It, it, there, there's no question it's an unlisted action because of the subdivision nature of it. Um, if you're asking the fact that are you precluded from taking action this evening because it's listed as a type-two on the agenda? Um, I, I do not believe you are. Um, we've properly identified it as an unlisted action. And so long as you follow the proper process for analyzing an unlisted seeker action, um, then, then you, you could do so tonight. Um, that being said, you do not have to take action tonight. Um, the Zoning Board of Appeals, uh, they have 62 days from a close of a, a public hearing uh, in order to make a decision. So you do not have to act on this application tonight. You have 62 days from this evening to act upon the application if you wanted to reserve your decision.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Andy. Does anybody else have anything from the, anybody from the board have anything else they'd like to add?
Madam Chair, I have a couple of questions for Mr. Woolley. Your application indicates that the objective is to create two buildable lots to accommodate a two-unit building in each lot. Is that still the objective?
The objective is to create two additional lots, yes.
That can accommodate two unit buildings per lot?
Um, we have, like I said, there are no plans to build on those lots, so.
I just want, that's in the application though, right?
Uh, look, I'm, I'm not an architect. Uh, I will, I will pass it over to the architect.
You did say that in the application.
Application, yeah. I'm surprised it says that because it's not consistent with plans we drew for him, which had one unit per lot.
Yeah, and, and even in those plans, like I said, we, we do not have any, any plans to build on these lots. All we are seeking is, is a subdivision. I think any, if there, if people want to come before the board on a future time to discuss construction, that, that'll happen at that time. But we do not have any thoughts about what would one day be built on those lots because we don't have plans to build on them.
Mark, you had something else or no?
Yeah, I mean, Aaron, this is, I guess, a question for you. If they were to build two-unit buildings on each one of these lots as new residential construction, they'd need two parking spots per unit, correct?
Uh, that is correct, based on our current zoning code. Uh, we're currently, obviously, you guys all know, going through a rewrite, um, that, that would have uh, a, an unknown effect on this, on this project. I, I don't know exactly how that would.
Right, so you know, working in a vacuum. So right now, so technically, if there were two unit buildings per lot on 30-foot wide front lots, they would need to provide eight off-street parking spots.
Uh, that is correct, yes.
Okay, and based on the survey that was provided with the subdivided lots, it's roughly 54 feet to the alleyway, so you'd need to put eight off-street parking spots in a 54-foot area.
It, ye- yes. Mark, I think what you're getting at is, is it would be difficult to achieve that without further variances.
Right.
Going.
Correct. And additionally, per the code, they would also need to accommodate 25% green space for each one of these lots.
I, I believe you're correct, yeah.
Okay.
The only, the only thing I will say is there was some talk of a side setback. And, and while we do have a side setback requirement, it would be possible to build uh, on each of these lots with a, with a party wall, essentially a zero, a zero-foot setback, um, like you see throughout the rest of Troy. So the side setback doesn't necessarily apply. You could build a, a four-unit building that straddles that property line and it would be a party wall.
Okay. So, Mr. Woolley, you said you have no plans, but I'm seeing an application where you have 103-foot frontage and you meet all of the requirements of the current code. Why are you changing it if you don't have plans?
Um, my wife is starting a business and uh, if we need access to cash in the future, we would like to be able to borrow against the value of these lots. She was a teacher for, for a number of years. Um, the pandemic, as I'm sure all of you who know, has been very difficult on teachers. Uh, she has decided to, to go on her own and start her own business. And if we, if we need access to additional cash, this, this was our method to attempt to find a way to get some access to additional cash by borrowing against them.
You purchased this how long ago?
Uh, 2018.
Okay.
Any further questions from anybody?
Madam Chair, I don't, I don't have any questions, but could I briefly respond to a couple of the items that were raised?
No, I mean, I don't, I don't mean to be rude. I don't want to be rude, but we've heard from everybody. And this is just up to, we're up to the board phase now, just for the, the members of the board. Um, I think you, you know, you made your point, you're in your position very clear and I, um, I don't think there's any need to go further. Um, do we have anybody else from the board has anything they want to add or question? Or if not, are we ready to make a motion? Well, first we have to do the secret, right, Katie?
Katie, do now. We do now, yes.
Yeah.
So, Madam Chair, for PLZBA 20220007, I asked the board to find this proposal to be an unlisted action with sufficient information available upon which to make a determination that the project is not expected to cause significant environmental impact.
Do we have a second? I'll second, nobody else will. And on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Carried. Do we have a motion on the application? Okay, I'll make the vote.
I apologize to interrupt Kathy. I'd just like to make the distinction that there are two separate area variances. So if you don't mind just separating the motions and the votes. Thank you.
One area variance is for the lot width and the other is for the minimum side setback? And we can't do them both together? All right. If we can't, then I make a motion that we deny the area variance for the minimum lot width at the front building line. Um, my motion is to deny is based upon the fact that I feel that, um, no question, this will be an undesirable change, will be produced in the character of the neighborhood. Uh, I mean, there's just no question. Uh, you know, we, we can go back and forth and back and forth, but we all know what's going to happen and you can't possibly, possibly put anything on either one of those two lots that is going to fit into that neighborhood. There's just not any way you can do it and to say this, say that, say the other thing, it's fine. That's the bottom line. There will never be anything there that is going to not be, have an adverse effect on the physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood. The uh, difficulty was self-created and um, it, I, I don't know. I, I don't know what else to say. That's all you can say. That does not belong down there and I couldn't live with myself if I were to vote yes. I'm putting whatever kind of proper, or um, structures on that property. So um, I have, uh, this is a, a motion to deny, an area variance to deny. Uh, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, John Normile seconds on the vote or on the motion. Katie McLaren? That was, okay, go ahead, Katie. I'm sorry.
I also vote to deny.
Mark Palazzi?
I vote yes to deny.
Uh, Jack McCann?
I also vote yes to deny.
And um, John Normile?
Vote yes to deny.
And I vote yes to deny. Kathy Conroy, vote yes to deny. The second variant, the second motion is for an area variance for the um, minimum side setback on this property at 199 Second Street. Where, and um, for the same reasons as stated in the previous area variance, I vote, this is a motion to deny, excuse me, motion to deny.
Chair, do you want me to make the motion to make it easier for you?
No, I just said it.
I, I wasn't sure if you'd.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, I did.
Okay.
You don't have to make it easier for me. I'm doing a, it, I said it would be a motion to deny based upon the reasons I gave for this first denial. Okay, so that being the case, Mark, do you want to second it?
Second.
Okay. Uh, Katie McLaren?
I also vote yes to deny.
Jack McCann?
I also vote yes to deny.
John Normile?
Vote yes to deny.
Uh, Mark Palazzi?
So I, I wanted to add these thoughts with respect to the first comment to make Kathy Bellas add them now.
All right.
This, this applies to both. I, I think approving either of these variances sets a negative precedent for reducing average lot frontage in the area and minimum setbacks. It just impairs the effectiveness of this zoning ordinance. And while your, your difficulties here are clearly self-created, that is a factor, but it's not something that should preclude us from approving or denying something. But it's clearly something here that was self-created. And if we approve this, it's likely a forthcoming subdivision's coming. It would lead to some substandard lots that would need to be created. Um, additionally, you're looking at increase in population density, parking density, traffic congestion, loss of green space. And for all of those reasons, I'm voting yes to deny.
Okay, great. Thanks, Mark. And I, Kathy Conroy, also vote yes to deny. So, sorry, Mr. Woolley, but we've, we've just, oh, I can say that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think you're, look, you're voting based on a building that doesn't exist. I don't agree with you.
But that's the way we voted, so.
That's your, your decision.
Yeah, you're right. Okay, do we have any, oh, do we have the next case?
Uh, we do. This is, this is Steve Strigman. I have Dave Crop on the phone. This is again for, um, so I'm going to let him present to you. Again, this is just so he can convert the ground floor into an apartment. Uh, a, a regulation that will go away if the new zoning ordinance is adopted, uh, that, that ground floor is commercial. But Dave, I'll let you present your proposal. Go ahead.
Okay, just before you do, just for the record, I want to say this is PLZBA 20220008. Go ahead, Dave, who I don't know, but I'll play it in.
I appreciate the uh, the opportunity to make up here. My name is David Crop. I live at 84, 94th Street Downtown. I own a three-story building commercially zoned. Um, second and third floors are occupied. I, I occupy one of the floors. I've lived there 14 to 15 years. Um, third floor is rented currently to a tenant I've had for 11 years. And basically what I'm asking is a special use permit. Due to my, I'm retired and, and age, age is catching up with me, has caught up with me. And I'd like to be able to continue living in the building. So the steps are, are killing me. Well, not literally, but anyway, makes it very difficult to, to uh, move around. The uh, proposal that I'm, I'm suggesting is minor interior changes and no exterior changes to the building. The building uh, interior will remain the same essentially, what I'm adding is a closet. And uh, and a shower stall in the bathroom. So I'm asking for a special use permit. As Steve said, this is probably going to go away and there is revised zoning code. But I have.
I think it sounds.
Then you might, anyone might have?
No, I think it sounds fairly simple what you want to do and certainly for a very good reason. And you're the one who's going to move downstairs and you probably rent your apartment now to somebody else, right?
Correct.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay, does anybody have any uh, questions for Mr. Crop? Do we have anybody here to speak in favor of this proposal? Anybody to speak in opposition? Okay, and um, we don't have any members of the board who have any questions. It was really fairly self-explanatory. Um, so, hearing nothing further. Do we have a secret?
Yes, Madam Chair, for PLZBA 20220008. Um, I'd ask the board find this proposal to be an unlisted action with sufficient information available. um, I'd ask the board find this proposal to be an unlisted action with sufficient information available upon which to make a determination that the project is not expected to cause significant environmental impact.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay, John Normile, all in favor?
Aye.
I, opposed? Carried. Do we have a motion on the application?
Let's see. Um, Madam Chair, um, regarding PLZBA 2022 dash 008, um, I would make a positive motion to approve um, the special use permit. Um, uh, I don't believe it's going to cause any change in the neighborhood. Um, it's a variance that, or a special use permit would not even be necessary if the new zone um is passed, the new zoning code. Um, I believe it's due to unique circumstances and um possibly reflects um, the unreasonable zoning ordinance itself. Um, so for those reasons, um, I make a positive motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and on the motion, John Normile?
I vote yes to approve.
Jack McCann?
Yes to approve.
Uh, Mark Palazzi?
Yes.
Kathy Conroy, yes to approve. And Katie McLaren?
Yes.
Okay, so there you go, Mr. Crop. You're all set.
Thank you very, very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, you're welcome. Um, do we have any further business? Do we have a motion to adjourn? Oh, yeah, you already made a motion. She went up to me. She made the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Thank you very much. See you next month.
Good night. Bye.
Have a good night. Thank you.
You're safe.
Steve, are you still there?
I, I believe he's gone.
You got, didn't take him long. Ash, maybe you can answer for us.
Sure, I'd be happy to do so, Ken.
When we uh, attended the the um, meeting on the new zoning code?
Yes.
Does that go towards our training for this year, 2022?
That's a very good question. I uh,
I think it's a good one.
Yeah, unfortunately, that is very much a Steve question.
Yeah, right. So could you ask him for us, or I could email him, but I mean, if you happen to run into him.
Uh, yeah, I'll I'll certainly run into him uh, tomorrow morning. But but if you don't mind, since I have a lot on my plate right now, if you don't mind.
Yeah, sure.
E- emailing Steven and CCing me because I'd be curious to know as well.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Have a good night, Kathy.
Okay, you all too. Good night.